April 3rd, 2018, Tuesday, Select Boards Meeting. This meeting is recorded.
Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, April 3rd. We'll start off with public comments. Not all at once. First thing we have to do is acknowledge Payroll Warrant 1-829 dated April 2nd, amount of $195,793.40. We have minutes from the regular session of March 27th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The other minutes are not ready yet.
Alright. Well, well. Okay. Town Library Painting Contract Sign Off Authorization.
Right, the Board just needs to ratify the chair. The Board did award it last week to Artemis Painting and the contract was prepared and signed by the parties, by the Chairman, so the Board needs to ratify the Chairman's signature on that award for that $18,800 painting.
Is that via vote?
Yeah, to ratify.
So, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Authorized Surplus of Vehicles.
What do we got?
I think I put a list in there.
There you go. 2001 Dump Truck. Is that the one with all the wheels or without all the wheels?
Depends on how you look at it.
That's the one without the wheels.
Yeah.
Old Building Inspector Crown Vic. Old Southwick Police Department Crown Vic. Old DPW Director Crown Vic. And others.
Right, because remember they're in the process of converting those homey down police cars.
Yes.
Right, and I gotta get the stickers off that other one so we can make that up.
Well, let me know, we'll make an afternoon of it.
Tea?
Yeah, sure.
Nice.
So we need authorization for...
Yes, at some point we'll sell them, you know, I'm gonna look for other things, but I wanna have this, I wanna get the folder ready, the titles and everything else to do the legal ad and everything.
And we're at the point now where some of these are just considered junk, those old cruisers?
Uh...
We weren't, what do you wanna do with them?
Well, we can...
I got people interested in them.
There are people...
Exactly.
I just sell them, we sell them as parts even if they're whole and running.
That's fine.
But if someone were interested in them, do they contact you?
Are we doing bids or we just wanna get rid of them?
Oh, no, there'll be bids.
Okay, so we're gonna do bids?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we either do bids or we junk them, we bring them to a scrapyard and get the market.
Got it.
So this time around, we're doing bids.
Okay. Gotcha.
Let us know when that date is, because we have...
Yeah.
There'll be an ad, there'll be a...
Alright, let's go.
So you wanna second his motion?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You need us to sign this or we're good to go?
No, no.
Okay, we need to authorize a committee.
Ooh, a committee?
Oh, yeah. This is the Open Space Plan Update Committee.
One guy I know that's good for that stuff.
I requested some resources via CPA Admin Account to help offset costs to secure consultant and update plan.
Right, because the timing of your plan is gonna be due in the fall of 2019 and Russ had mentioned at a previous meeting to try to see if the Regional Planning Agency had some money and they won't have a grant award cycle till next winter. So, I then went to the CPC and they are willing to fund that cost out of their admin budget, so they went up from 4% to 5% on the warrant article.
So the entire open space study can be financed from the admin account?
That is, that's the objective of what we're gonna try to do.
Sure, that's wicked smart. I was actually thinking if this could be a CPA project, but that's even better.
That is CPA project.
Well, you can't have one that's the other. Yeah, yeah, right, exactly.
Because it's no different, they have to hire consultants, surveyors, and other people to assist them, you know? And they have to have these plans approved so that they can leverage their funds to access other grant funds like your North Pond one.
Understood.
So the committee did embrace that decision and support it and they've submitted a warrant article that reflects that.
On the previous plan, doesn't say.
Melissa Ryan makes note of when the previous one was approved.
Yeah, I was looking at what constituted the Open Space Planning Committee last time.
Um, that would in...
If we're gonna form a committee, we have to probably say who it is.
Your Park and Rec and Planning Board member, Conservation Commission member, um, some citizens, it would usually represent those cross-sections of people. CPA member.
Pioneer Valley Planning Commission did the...
Did the last update.
Right.
Right, the committee, I think, is willing to look at some other entities to do it.
Right.
But this will allow the committee to get some estimates from people, some quotes.
Right. No, no, I just, I mean, we had a great open space plan done the last time, so I think they just have to build off of that.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, no, they're not gonna reinvent the wheel.
Right.
Right, so, you know, again, you'd be looking at maybe a Planning Board member, Conservation Commission member, the coordinator, Park and Rec member, CPA member, you know? Those are the people that are usually on those committees.
Right.
And then some citizens.
Right.
How, uh, 1, 2, 3, 4?
Odd number.
Yeah, so something between 5 and 7.
So, 'cause I'm assuming if we're gonna authorize a committee, we should probably describe the makeup of said committee.
Well, I think you gotta leave yourselves, you know, once we go to Florida, we get maybe other ideas that other people submit to us that also may make sense, so we don't really foreclose those.
So do we need to form a committee tonight, then?
You don't have to form it tonight, but we could start advertising everyone, citizens, and then you can designate people from other groups.
Perfect.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, now you said you wanted me to read the whole thing. I have a CD BG invoice for $4,531,048. Warrant number 17.
Yep, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Greater Westfield Chamber is having their legislative luncheon Friday, April 13th at Tacoa, 11:30 to 1:30.
Anybody interested in that?
This is Chairman, I somehow got the honor of moderating this event, so I will be at this event.
Congratulations.
Wonderful.
Your picture's on the website.
My picture is on the website?
It got hacked.
I could see it now, thank you both for coming.
Yeah.
Awesome, congratulations.
Wow.
It's an esteemed honor.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. Anyone else going?
He's doing a great job, I would never wanna...
We could just go and heckle.
We could, well, we don't have to tell him we're going.
Oh, that's right, we're not, alright, it's a secret now. Okay.
Mike, are you going?
Yeah.
We'll see, a few heckles.
Yeah.
Keep your phone on.
We'll tell you when to say.
Practice for town meeting.
Okay, so that number 6A is the City Town Owner Agreement, um, for property on 80 South Lane in Granville, and as part of this, this is probably a CD BG thing too, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, it's the implementation of it.
Correct, so it's for signature.
Just for the Chair to sign?
Need a motion for the Chair to sign.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Yeah.
Okay, do you wanna move into this, the warrant articles now, or do you wanna hold those to work for the other action items?
Exactly.
Okay. Update on Veteran Street Reconstruction. There was a letter here from Randy, I know I've seen it. Okay?
Looks like all those issues with the Skybox were worked out?
Yep. Skybox has graciously allowed property owners to park their vehicles in the parking lot during construction without a two-drink minimum, and case access was restricted due to the construction. Yeah, he's allowing them to park in our, on our property until that, yes, thank you. It's still very nice, we appreciate it, all kidding aside. Okay, noted. And then we'd also like to publicly recognize and thank Maureen Gerard, um, who graciously cleaned approximately 100 United States flags that are proudly displayed along College Highway. And we plan to have those installed the week of April 9th in advance of Patriots' Day. So look out for DPW guys in the air.
Yeah, with drones.
No drones.
Rob and I have a drone. Two quill.
And then I need...
Free gift.
Authorization for the Chair to sign a DPW Memorandum of Understanding, should one come to fruition forthwith.
Yep, Labor Council wants that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And there's also a library one for you to sign too.
Yeah, well, this one we can sign, right?
And I want you can sign.
Have we voted on this?
No, you can vote and sign it tonight.
We should probably vote on it. So this is the settlement agreement, buy-in between the Town of Southwick and the UPS-EU, Local 424, AKA Southwick Library Employees. This was as we previously agreed? Yes?
Yes.
Motion for the Chair to sign.
I'll make that motion.
Same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we go to the warrant articles, correct?
Actually, you also have the election warrant here.
Right here. There's seven to sign.
Oh, yeah.
How about, you know what, I can do, what, may I have those stuff?
You can have those. This one I didn't sign.
Well, I'm just gonna take all the signature pages out of what you just had, no the election.
The election one?
Yeah.
I'll give that back. She doesn't trust me with that page, I get it.
It's got the election of the offices and the ballot question?
Yes.
That the Town Council has worked on in the last week.
It's fun watching lawyers go back and forth.
This will allow the, uh, the Clerk's office to go to the point where they can have the ballots.
There's actually eight here, do you want all eight signed?
Sure, I don't think it really matters how many there are.
Okay.
You have to sign all those.
So you just sent us the signature pages?
Yes.
So we date that today, sir?
You're voting and dating it today.
Okay, so we need a motion to post the election warrant, correct? That's the, that's the correct motion?
Sign, sign.
Sign and post.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is the results of the caucus and who the parties have put forward for the elections and...
Poor Jimmy.
And it's your placement of the ballot question that you worked out with the Attorney and the Planning Board and other entities last week.
We're sitting right here, I can hear you. Just kidding. Okay, so now we go through the articles as they are.
Right, so the Planning Board has forwarded on to Town Council the Marijuana Zoning Bylaw?
Yep.
And it's got the latest version that accommodates the ballot question link, because as you know, there'll be a standalone town bylaw based upon the ballot question, but then there's an incorporated section in the zoning bylaw. And that was the language that Chairman Daherty worked out with Ben Coyle. So is everybody okay with that?
This is 7A?
Yep. And of course, there is, within the folder, you have the, Doug, the other section where the zoning map too has to be upgraded to. So that's another section of it?
So the article is actually all of these, this stuff?
Right.
Yeah, this whole thing?
Right.
Correct. Okay. As long as the Chair of the Planning Board and the Town Attorney are able to work out that difference in the language, which...
That's what they've been doing.
I'm sure they have by now, I didn't catch up my email.
I just wanna make note to make sure that the map also, whether...
Right.
In your experience in the past, Doug, has the map been a separate article?
Yes, always. Because it may get updated for some other article, for example, there's a zone change petition on the warrant as well, correct? There may be a zone change, there was, oh, we sent that to the Planning Board and didn't get it, make it?
You referred it to them.
So, but for example, right? That also would affect the zoning map, but not zoning in the Town of Southwick, so that's why you would have a separate article for the map.
Alright, so I just need to remind Ben that as part of his review, he's also got that, because they electronically sent him that map too, not the huge one we have in the folder.
Not the actual size one.
Yeah. So I need to make sure he does the map amendment too.
You like Steven Wright, don't you? Remember the old Steven Wright joke? E5.
Okay, so you had that one in there, and then let's see, what else came in here? You then had...
The Morehouse Roof?
Yep, you had the Morehouse Roof, which is CPA, you had the CPA Reservations of Funds for the various categories. You had the Admin Article, which they put up to 5%. And then you actually had another thing come in that was a late arrival, but it still came in on time for them, was another APR down on North Long Yard. There was a companion one done, abutting it on Larrow. So this is another 10% local share on a, um, a project that the state of Massachusetts API program is working on. So those are the four articles that your CPC committee submitted. Then afterwards, you have, Randy had reminded us about the temporary repair of private ways, but the Attorney has already drafted that version and you have already okayed it in an earlier meeting.
To put it on the warrant, right.
And then there was an amendment for the pump station, because originally you were going to renovate the pump station on College Highway. Now it looks like you're gonna have to relocate it further north, north, to deal with the water coming from the city of Springfield's Transmission Line that used to be treated, which is untreated now.
Yep.
So that's a DEP issue too. So, um, that's gonna be a much more expensive price point than the original $400,000, so Randy's putting together the edited numbers now, and I've had discussions with Bond Council who's gonna work out what that language needs to be. Because I think what they're gonna end up doing now is instead of renovating the two stations, they're gonna put a new one further.
So where, where is the existing one?
Uh, it's near that vape shop.
It's on the left, right, the break one?
Yeah.
And then this will be further north?
This will be further north at 8:13, because if you look at the next warrant article, it's to accept an easement at 8:13 College Highway.
Okay.
Which is probably near like Whip City.
Yep, right here. And would they, would they remove the old one?
The other two, the other two would be decommissioned.
We can make that a toll booth.
That'd be excellent in your speech on the 13.
On the toll booth?
Yeah, Westfield-Southwick line.
Toll booth Willie will make it?
Yeah, Toll Booth Willie. He used to be a farmer.
So that's, um, you know, that's what's come in in addition to the other ones that you already, you know...
Is that the second pump station, the one we just put in?
No, no, no.
Now that one's been there.
Both of these, both of these...
Where's the other one?
North Long Yard.
Okay.
Both of these pump stations have been there for 20 years. You recently had a vote last year to rehabilitate them.
Yeah, what do we put behind Tuckers?
That is a water pump station.
Water pump station.
Okay, that's, that's, that's a lift station to go up the hill, just like you have one out here on College Highway near the, by the library.
Yep.
Yeah, those are more recent.
Okay.
These other ones are when you take water off of the Springfield, off the mountain line, on its way through Westfield to Springfield and the other communities, you take water off of them and you supplement your water, but it's, but it used to be treated by them upstream, now it's no longer gonna be treated, so they're gonna treat it at a later stage.
Springfield is?
Yes.
Right.
So Westfield must have the same problem to them, right?
Because remember, we used to take that water...
As the chlorination.
We used to take that water, chlorinate our lines...
To flush our lines, right, yeah.
Flush our lines, and now we won't have that ability to do that.
But now we, we're doing our own.
So you will have to do that as a freestanding water system with your own distribution, you will have to do that.
Cool.
Awesome.
Ooh, that'd be a nice toll booth.
So again, with that, you'll also need an easement for the placement of that thing. And then the, and then, of course, the outline I gave you, you know, has the other, all the different votes that you've had. And the special one, you know, you're gonna do those year-end salary transfers, union agreements, snow and ice deficit, any paving money, culverts, construction, and the Article 4, the usual O-PED contribution. So those are generic you do each year, are there any questions on those?
Tomorrow during our work session, we'll have some dollar amounts to put around some of these.
Some of these things, well, and some things you'll be making, and on some things you'll be making the decision, you know?
Right.
You'll be getting ready to, well, actually, you won't finish the decisions, you'll do those next week with the Finance Committee.
Right, but we'll be discussing it, right.
You'll be making headway.
Yep.
So I had, you know, several interactions and conversations with Ben Coyle as Town Council today also, and Ken Albano and some others. And then this also includes, remember, you were gonna have the Council on Aging House Numbering Project, and now we're also, you wanted to add the Sidewalk Bank to the meeting.
Yep.
Or evolving, so that's reflected based upon your meeting last week with Town Council. The Regional School Budget is being voted on tonight with their assessment and their capital debt borrowing authorization, so those are being voted on tonight, and those articles will come to us tomorrow. Ben is working on the negotiations with the Loadstar Pilot Agreement. Let's see, you already had the Public Informational Meeting on the North Pond Jet Ski Bylaw. And then there's the authorization to sell the old library with the historical preservation restriction, but Ben's gonna work on that, he's... Any questions?
I hope we're seeing other articles coming in now, we're past there, right?
No.
Sure?
It's gonna be a long evening.
I was just gonna say, are we taking bets on what time we're getting out?
I don't know. It's gonna be a long evening, but, uh, you know, as long as we do our homework and educate people, the press...
They'll educate us.
Is going to help us out, get the message out there.
Yeah.
Democracy in there.
Well, you need to recognize, you guys have been working on these things for six months, so this is a culmination of finalizing them, you know, as an agenda item, putting them on a document known as a warrant and then voting them.
Right.
Sure, sounds simple the way you say it.
I was just gonna say, it sounds so easy that way. That's why I'm your aide, Carl.
That's right, we all are.
Yeah. Wonderful. What else?
What else, do we need to do anything for this at this point? No, we're not...
No, because you'll be signing the warrants, yeah, at some point. Sell the library, that's on there, the old business direction warrant, so...
Okay, continuing on, uh, Southwick Police Department Lieutenant Vacancy Process. So we're supposed to have edits back for...
I think you were gonna discuss what you wanted.
Correct.
Yeah, or, or individual members were gonna give that.
Yep. Thoughts, comments?
Well, I thought we thought about changing it back to the, was it Admin, is that the proper word for the schedule?
Yeah, because this hour, this hours of work here, when it, when it was originally posted several years ago, was sort of a split shift.
Right.
And then about two years into it...
It went back.
It, it went back to the daytime shift, so that's 4:21 during regular hours of the work week, which were, what, 8 to 4?
Yeah.
Where it always was.
Does the Chief have the right to assign?
She still does anyway.
Right, right.
So I mean, if Chief wanted to deviate on the hours for certain...
That's why he did it last time.
Okay.
He did the original posting, then he changed, then he changed his own time.
We're not negotiating away any of the Chief's rights.
No, but it, it's in there.
But it's a, it's a 5 and 2, right?
Because the occupant of the position will be required of the Chief of Police to rotate down the shifts as needed.
Of course.
It was already in there, so it's right.
Right.
Yeah, it's more of an Admin 5 and 2.
It's a 5 and 2, not a 4 and 2, right?
Yeah. So that's on the hours of work part. The reporting responsibility is the same. Qualifications, you already have the lieutenant job description, you did that last fall.
Yep.
So the wage is the same, that's the formula, 14% above the Sargent's process. So that leaves you with your process. Last time you did this, you had them submitting letters and all sorts of things to the Board and you went through it, and there was, there had been a longer elapsed period of time from when you did the Chief's process last time to when you did the Lieutenant this one, you still have the same pool of candidates, they're still eligible.
So the only candidates arrows was that pool that we interviewed?
The remaining members.
Remember.
Okay.
So we still have their packets?
Oh, we have, yeah.
Right, we do.
We do. So then we just maybe wanna post, if they wanna update them, they can, we don't need to have brand-new books.
I don't think you would want them to go through that process.
No, I don't, that's what I'm nicely trying to say.
Yeah.
And do we wanna interview them?
So that would be consider letters to the latest...
I think we have to, yeah.
Resume packet, okay. Okay, and then this one said the Board's argument before was conduct preliminary interviews of all interested officers who apply, I don't think you need to do preliminary, just...
Interviews.
Alright.
Two weeks to post, tops, yeah.
Okay, so you want, so when we do the posting, you want their responses within two weeks?
And will they, and will the response to be a letter of interest that they wanna do it?
Yep, and if, and, and a submittal of any information that they wanna update from their previous submission, there you go.
Yeah, any interested applicants can submit a letter of interest and, and updates to the latest resume packet on file from the Board from the previous Chief process.
Yep, correct, perfect.
So I'll work on this, I'll have, Labor Council will approve it to form, and then we'll be able to issue it in the next several days.
Perfect.
Okay.
That was easy.
Yep.
Reminder, 4/4, fiscal year 19 budget work session.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow. Here.
What time? Pizza.
5?
6?
What time is it at?
It's posted, what time is it posted?
Oh, right, at 5:30, right?
I believe it's 5:30.
What do you want on your pizza?
It never shows, so...
I'm, I'm in charge this year.
Oh!
Are you, yeah, okay. Are you, yeah, okay.
Are you bringing two suits?
No, 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 no. Russ, Russ made, Russ made, I, I missed it last time and he reminded me six times during the meeting. So I'll get, I'll get the pizza.
You sure?
Yeah.
I don't want to have a miscommunication. I guess we'll talk tomorrow.
Yeah.
We'll have to send him a text, you know? No suits, pepperoni please.
No suits, pepperoni, right.
Half and half cheese, peppers.
Okay, another reminder, four-ten, CRC at seven o'clock, Mr. Moglen and incoming Chief Bishop.
Isn't four-ten a pot thing?
That's four-twenty.
That's four-twenty.
I'm not supposed to know that.
Now, we're starting, we're starting on the tenth because you're, we're gonna be having a selectman meeting at what time, Robin? Did we decide?
Three o'clock. I'm kidding. Probably five.
On which one?
On the tenth. Was it five?
Yes, I think he said five.
Yeah, because we have, we have a poll hearing coming in that needs to be done with Verizon for the Shirtless Brook Bass Small Bridges Program. So that's necessary for the phone company to do all the necessary changes along the route where the new bridge is gonna be installed.
Oh, they're fun.
Oh, yeah, we haven't done one. I thought we'd get all the polls.
Oh, wait, oh, it's fun.
People come out and droster that out there, right?
Oh, sometimes.
I've been, I've been present at them, but I have not conducted one.
Most of them, it's just you stamp it.
Yeah.
But occasionally you got somebody with a new house and they want to go over in detail.
Where that pole's going.
Where that pole's going, if it's gonna any way ruin their...
And that has been worked, that has been worked out because the abutters that were involved in this have already come in and had their documents notarized by Robin to sign off.
Oh, okay.
The company.
Remember that one hearing we had?
Oh, I remember that hearing. Dog hearing was...
Oh, my God.
Done that.
Yeah.
Okay, four-eleven. BEA at six o'clock at the Southwick Regional School, Mr. Moglen and Mr. Didi. Mr. Russ will be there earlier.
I'll be there earlier.
Saleable Library, we can, we're gonna move that to town meeting, right?
Right, so, right, so that, that's a warrant article.
So that's, that, we've reviewed the election ballot question for marijuana. We've forwarded that on to the, on to the election warrant. That's done.
Right.
Sidewalk Bank, we've moved that to the, to the town meeting warrant. That's done.
Yes, sir.
And now we...
The Purple Heart Trail.
The Purple Heart Trail.
I think Mr. Baltiga must figure out when he's getting tired as he drives back. So he calls. That's why you got our conversation today. And within that hour, other than the lecturing, was the Purple Heart deal got approved yesterday. Gonna get signed tomorrow and we should see it within a week. We should have something where we can...
Be able to give Randy the go-ahead and the signs will be for Memorial Day.
Yep, exactly, yeah.
It's too bad we couldn't even make Patriots' Day, but Memorial Day was what we were shooting for.
Thought it'd all be done tomorrow, but he just didn't want to say that. It was wanted until we had it in front of us.
I guess he got tired of the phone calls.
I don't know, but he's got my number now. Yep, a nice talk about the state police for an hour. It was a good conversation.
Any other old business?
I'm good.
I, I just have one thing and, and I don't want to make a big deal out of this.
But?
But. It's this thing with the Conservation Commission and the Sofinowski Preserve.
How's that going?
Well, I read their minutes where they discussed it. And then they said something in the minutes about, they had some contract that ran till...
Twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one. Now, red flags went up on me because I don't think anybody has the authority other than the board of selectmen assigned agreement. Agreements are usually maybe three years tops, you know?
Right, right. Rarely, rarely can they go beyond three years, almost permitted by statute.
But I mentioned this last year. It never got a response and, and, and then I asked again. And, and then they're trying to say, well, well, it has something to do with the ag commission. This doesn't have anything to do with the ag commission now. This is what I would like to see. And, and tell me if I'm wrong, but I would like to see by our work session tomorrow night, a copy of this agreement or the chairman of the Conservation Commission to be sitting right there to explain to me what this, what the heck is going on, how much money is being expended and who signed this agreement, you know, under what authority? You know, because I don't want to hear from anybody that it's, it's state money or federal money or it's taxpayers' money, you know? And it's, and the thing is ludicrous, you know? And if, if it's not ludicrous, give me the facts so I can understand it. But, but again, I don't want to make a, a big deal out of this thing, but it's gone on for two years now. I'd, I'd really like an answer so that when I get to the Conservation Commission budget, I, I will know whether I'm going to be subtracting money from that budget.
Understood.
So, Mr. Chairman, that's what I'm asking.
Seems like a reasonable request because it is a multi-year query on your part on this issue. And to suddenly that a contract appears.
Which nobody mentioned in two years.
I don't know how they have the authority to enter into a contract about this. So let's, request made.
I will. I'll, I'll speak to Chris and Dennis.
That's the only thing I had under all business.
Do you have anything under new business? Did I skip right through that?
No, I, I figured we've, we've had a full night. I'll wait till next, next week.
Sir?
I'm good.
Any other old business?
Nothing I can remember.
We do not need an executive session?
No.
Thirty-seven minutes.
With Carl here.
With Carl here. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.